... Consider the Republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anything to add to the agenda tonight?
Uh, yeah, discussion regarding, uh, village emails.
Um, I'd like to add a discussion about the website.
Anything else?
I have an announcement, but that's not...
Alright, put that on notice. Alright, I move to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Um, on favor?
Alright.
Adam.
Uh, public comment then? Public, anyone? Five minutes, Katie?
Um, Katie Cohen, Melody DeFonce. Um, I wrote this yesterday and I guess I'm gonna have to revise it on this, while I just knew of a vision. Um, I was, as you know, well, to do, I was part of the team that wrote the original two thousand nine applications to state to request funding to study alternative governance models for New Paltz. Um, their team boss, um, that got together and decided that we would try to get this local government funding. Um, so that's what we did. Um, this process, I don't know if that's naive or just too optimistic, but it's most definitely turned out differently from what we had hoped and expected. Uh, we wanted in this study to provide the requisite factual information, and this is a quote from the original proposal, "to help the public distinguish between fact and rhetoric in order to develop and contribute important opinion and participation." Um, at the time, I remember this well, we actually got buy-in and votes from Wary Village, um, and town board members. Some of you were even at the meeting and dug up the minutes, um, at the time. But they said because the plan we laid out was gonna be, it was gonna be informed and it was going to be inclusive. Um, disappointingly, we haven't come anywhere near, not even close, achieving that goal. Um, in this latest round, and there's so much to say and not enough time, we did do it. Um, so, I'm not gonna say everything, but let me just start with the assessment of the reports, the human resources, the infrastructure and the financial reports that were completed by consolidation proponents. They seriously lack sufficient detail and documentation. Um, sorry, but if a professional submitted these reports, one could easily make the case to not pay. I know people worked hard, but the presentation, the documentation, the lack of detail, um, this mishigoss of files on the homepage, um, with no cohesion, um, no, just, it's very, very difficult. Took me hours to sort through it all, and I do this for a living. Um, so I can't imagine, you know, Joe Citizen trying to figure out what's going on, you know? At a minimum, you need a primer to explain all of this, you know, that, that is well documented and makes sense. Um, they're unorganized, they lack attention to standard reporting and accounting best practices. So it's not just presentation, this is best practices that are known with one, one reporting financial data, um, accounting, um, things that are just standard. Um, and I, I, I hate this, but egregiously false information about aggregate savings and quotes was released to the public in the press before there was any real or adequate validation of these numbers. Um, really flippant and I think irresponsible to throw up numbers out that haven't been validated. Um, at a recent joint town-village meeting that was here, I think, I wasn't here and watched the video, um, just saw in the moon that the town supervisor actually silenced the independently elected town highway superintendent when he was asked to provide detail about over half a million dollars his department would contribute to this supposed savings. This was very upsetting to me, so I just went straight to Chris and I called him and I sent him a bunch of emails, and I'll circle back to this, like, just less than an hour ago, he talked to me for an hour to kinda help me figure this all out. He's a really good guy, um, and really wants to do the right thing for me, Paul. In my review of these reports, I could not find, and this is really critical, I could not find any significant savings that would actually require consolidation to implement. So these are things that we could do right now, actually many of them we've already done. Um, this is critical, cause it's being posited as these are things we could get if we consolidate, when we don't need to consolidate to do these things. Um, I found no workload or safety analysis or any assessment of the impact that proposed cuts to personnel and services would have. For example, something as simple as how much longer will it take to plow all the roads and... There appear to be multiple lines that were cut from the town budget this year in anticipation of merger, but are being counted towards future savings. Um, I'll come back to that too. Government appears to grow, not shrink, as many new and various infrastructures, special districts are proposed for the village, for example, lighting districts, sidewalk districts, police district, fire districts, sewer district. These are less terrible as well.
Fire districts.
These, these districts. Overall, I agree that I have to report as a tax restructuring report, not a consolidation plan. Um, as it includes, and this is very disturbing, a significant tax shift from the towns to the village. It is definitely not an appealing scenario for villagers to have their taxes increase in tandem with losing their home rule. Um, as representatives of the village residents, this is not what you should be doing to represent the village residents. Let me talk about my conversation with Chris. All the proposed savings, the five hundred thousand, five hundred twenty K cuts, um, of these, okay, all of them were already made with consolidation in mind, so that they, oh, have already been done. Um, four positions at three hundred twenty K already eliminated from the town budget. So these are not future savings, these are not savings that could happen because of consolidation. These are things, this is downsizing that has already occurred. Um, I call it risk-taking, because both the supervisor and the highway superintendent have said they based it with, you know, rolling the dice that this merger would happen. Um, so it was unclear whether these positions would need to be added back in. Um, they're all one-time costs, oh, so the, so four positions for three hundred twenty K was people, workforce. The remainder, two hundred K, um, he didn't buy stuff that he knows the village has, you know, things like that. So it's materials and, and stuff, not people. Um, all cuts that have already occurred, um, already instituted with the assumption of merger in the short term. Um, and he strongly stated he in no way can and will cut more people, cause you can't do that safely. Um, unclear about whether or not if consolidation doesn't happen, if he has to hire people back. Um, but overall, to me, um, and from talking to him and looking at the numbers again, none of these cuts require consolidation, and he actually has even more great ideas for efficiency, and all of this, based on my analysis, could be done via intermunicipal agreements. Um, many people, well, many people, some people were asking questions about the last meeting, about, you know, more information about how the financial reports were put together, and it was said, "We'll go to the video", which I'd rather be working on the Millbrook Preserve plan than doing all this, it's so frustrating. Um, and other things, there was only so many volunteer hours in a day. So we went to the video, and, and Sally and Susan, a lot of quotes, just been very forthright about taxing rental properties at a higher tax rate through the community, um, in the village, not just Village District Six. Um, taxing higher in the village, concept is written into the overall plan, people of the town, um, residents outside of the village, it was explicitly said, might be more willing to vote for this consolidation, because god knows, they've been getting taxed for god knows how long, this is a Susan quote, "in their mind unfairly, and this would correct the inequalities." This is not a consolidation plan, this is a tax shift plan, um, and unfairly to the village residents. Um, have a lot to say about it not being an objective study, um, but a marketing plan. Um, that those last quotes were at the December third meeting at the one hour and twenty minute mark. Um, same meeting, one hour and forty-seven minute mark. Um, town property owners who paid for water will receive a major discount in their rates, while those water users in the village will plan a higher rate. That's a quote from Dave Lent. Um, Suzie, Sally says to Dave, "I'm going to insist that you exploit and emphasize the decrease and benefit to the town users." Not good, not cool.
It is.
Um, it's wrong. This is supposed to be an objective study, not exploiting certain populations or another city, we can get a tax cut. Um, at the same meeting, two hours, six minutes, twenty-four seconds, Ross Pollack smartly worries that with the current timetable, the public may not have enough time to receive and understand the information. Sally and Suzie argue about it, and then at the two hours, seven minute mark, Sally says, "Come May, if you're Glenn leaves the board, Ryan Kim does leave the board. You can't have a board that is totally against consolidation. Within a year, my term is up, you don't know what's gonna happen with the next supervisor if they're gonna support it." So basically, we're at a moment in time when we have a lot of people who are committed, we have the support of both boards to move this forward. If we don't grab the opportunity now and we wait longer than April first, then you're dealing with a bunch of unknowns, and as far as I'm concerned, kissing goodbye. If this is a good thing to do, it shouldn't matter who is elected in office. More data at the three, at the, um, three hour, seven minute mark. Basically, Susan, confirming what I said before, every decision that was done in the two thousand thirteen budget was done with the eye towards, hopefully, we can consolidate. I can assure you that if we do not consolidate next year's budget, we might see people added back to the budget, because that assumption is off the table. Um, I supported this study. I helped write this study. It was called "The New Paltz: Effective and Efficient Government Study." I wanted this data. You cannot pigeonhole me as a anti-consolidationist. I still believe that there's things that can be done, a study that can be done, paths that we can take to make New Paltz government more efficient and more effective. This is not it. Thank you. That's why I brought these, cause I said I would last night.
May I ask some questions?
Sure. Um... I don't know what you're gonna do, I guess, when I was running the unit.
What?
I have...
Oh, uh, yeah, okay. Um, I was gonna just ask, you said we would lose municipal home rule?
Right.
How would we do that?
Um, the village could not be its own separate entity. I saw what you have proposed for tomorrow's, um, governance, the whole governance piece. We need a lot more information on that.
Right, yes, that's gonna be developed further tomorrow, but, okay. Go on.
Asking people to vote on what kind of government they're gonna have without telling them what kind of government they're gonna have is...
They're gonna have the village.
Right, we're gonna flat, well, we're gonna, well, we're gonna flesh it out before we call it to a vote.
Right.
So, okay, but how are we gonna lose municipal home rule? We'll see. But go on, how are we gonna lose municipal home rule?
Okay, you're saying you're gonna have one ward, and this is a very complex issue. You're gonna have one ward for the village, one, um, at-large ward, I don't...
No.
No, that hasn't been discussed or decided. Those are all recommendations, Katie, as you...
I do have a real name, Paul.
Wait, 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 wait.
Follow-up to that.
Okay.
Um, if, if, and I don't know the answer to this question, cause I didn't have time to research it, but every year, the boards come together to say if you're a village or a town, right? If, no? Don't you have to meet and have an order meeting every year, is my understanding?
No, one day you're a town. If it, if it's a, a village-wide town...
The board has to decide what you're gonna operate for that year, right?
No, you're just a town for one day, and then the rest of the year, you operate as a village.
So if right, it's still the governance structure that you're gonna have?
That would be the plan.
I, I, I can answer your question fully. I, that is, that is my position, that it's a tax shift to the village with the loss of the former, this current proposal.
That's fine.
And we really should, this is, these are important conversations to have.
Sure, wait, uh, can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a couple here. Um, i- if these are all things that could or should be happening, how many intermunicipal agreements do we have? How many are currently in effect, and why is the government not working through this already when we're two separate entities?
Um, Chris didn't even know that it could be done via intermunicipal agreement. I do have a listing from a report that we did in my work at of all the intermunicipal agreements in Ulster County.
Okay.
Um, it's a couple of years old now. I mean, I assume you already have some intermunicipal...
We have about eight...
All expired.
Right.
Right. Um, uh, you said the process was not open?
Right.
All the meetings were...
We know that.
Well, I mean, oh, I, I mean, I was here...
Here's one example.
All the meetings are taped, they're all open to the public. I mean, granted, well, granted, our, uh, the website leaves much to be desired, but this is also, I'm very upset about it as well.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, all the meetings are open to the public, anyone can come to them, all, they were all advertised, so...
I gave you in April two thousand eleven that list of guidelines for, um, public representation.
Yes, I recall that.
You could look at that, those different...
Right.
Sally, I have to say, Sally was the only person on the steering committee, but you can give us the time of day when we were really pushing for more openness in this process, and thankfully, that is why the meetings are taped. Um, and, um, something as simple as, um, and open and transparency go hand in hand, something as simple as, in the grant proposal, it says each municipality would have dedicated websites with all the documents throughout the process.
Yes.
You know, the Ning website, the town, this is not you, has on its homepage for the last, how many months that the next government efficiency meeting is on, May ninth, two thousand eleven. I don't know, I think I'm free, I'll have to check my calendar. Um, s- these are really simple things that you need to do for citizens to have open and transparent government. Danny, that's why we wrote it that way.
Okay.
I thought that's how we should do it, then that's why we wrote it that way, no?
You're right, and I mean, y- y- you make some interesting points, but at the same time, I feel like in order to get people to come out to government meetings, I don't, it's a little difficult.
It's not just coming to meetings, and like, I...
Well, you're right, and, and being a part of the process, but again, like, it's on, it's on cable, all the meetings are online, we publish our calendar, I mean, the town's website is also not even working for their purposes, nevertheless, the con- consolidation purposes.
I can tell you when we wrote the grant, and there's other people that hopefully will come tomorrow and talk about that. There's gotta be a different way of doing things. We've seen a lot of things just not work in this town, because so many people work and they do so much hard work, and they get to the end of it, and the public's not engaged, and they don't know anything, and it's hard to engage them. I'm not saying it's easy, but there is that list that I gave you.
I remember, yeah, sure.
You know, um, and again, persevere, please, keep trying to make it more open, and, open and transparent, and, you know, just the fact that, like, on the village homepage, just this mishmash of files with no...
Preaching to the choir. Um, can I ask you, you said that there's gonna be a tax increase in the village?
Yes.
Do you have numbers that you can give us for that?
Um, not tonight, I'm s- still working on it.
Okay.
I mean, clearly, from the quotes, just from the people that were on the committee, you know, they were saying the shift was gonna go from the town, because, I mean, we know historically that when you go to separate districts, I mean, I know that you already know the proposal to increase it for District Six for policing, which is a whole nother conversation.
Well, that's, um, yeah, it would be like a, a business improvement district.
Yeah.
Right, so like...
And that's only a recommendation.
Right.
That is for future government to determine.
Right. Yeah, I, I'd like to know who's gonna stick around and see this through, or, cause you're making seriously big historic radical promises. So if you're planning to run for reelection and make sure that people can actually save the money that you're promising them you're gonna save, I think it's gonna go a long way if people say that they're committed to this community and are gonna stick around to make sure that these promises that are being made are gonna be common to fruition.
I can answer two of your questions, and the rest I can't.
Can I just, can I just give her one more?
Oh, sure, go ahead, I thought you were...
No, 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 it's a...
You've got...
I, I, you know, I was just, I was just writing notes, that's all. Um, so you said something that, if this is a good thing to do, it shouldn't matter who's elected. You, you quoted Sally on that, and it kinda sounded like it was an accusatory thing, like, it, well, it should, well, huh, uh... Well, my point is that, you know, some people who get elected are just only out for their personal interest.
Right.
And I'm not saying anyone is currently, but you never really know, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to represent the will of the public as a whole, as opposed to maybe their constituency or whatever the case may be, so, you know, just...
That's tough, I mean, I, all of you, I've worked with all of you in some capacity on some issue, I agree and disagree with all of you on some capacity. But that's why you need a body of knowledge that stands independent. That's the whole point of saying we want facts to be separated from rhetoric, and we don't have that information.
Well, I, I just wanted to say one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you for, um, working to increase the public dialogue. Um, it's important that people ask questions, obviously, and, you know, if people aren't out there asking questions, then things aren't gonna get fleshed out, and you're right, then misinformation can happen, and, you know? It's important.
Well, thanks for just having not enough type setup so that you could ask me that many questions. I know there was some stuff people wanna let go.
Well, you know. Sally, would you like to...
A lot of your questions are questions of discussion for tomorrow night, because the joint boards have never acted on the recommendations of the Efficiency Committee. That's number one. Two, I think you know what the recommendations are, because you attended most of the meetings.
Well, I saw the agenda for tomorrow as well.
And so, you've answered your own question in terms of municipal home rule. If the two boards agree with the recommendations of the Efficiency Committee, and one of them is that we will function as a village form of government, co-terminus, then you don't lose home rule. Okay?
I think it's more complex, but I will come back with more information on that topic.
Was that the only one, Sally?
Hmm?
Was that the only question?
I haven't, yeah, I don't...
Oh, okay, for Katie, I'm okay. Thanks, Katie. Uh, is there anyone else? Anyone else here to public comment? No, please.
Uh, thanks, Mark, for getting a village of New Paltz. I don't have a dog in the consolidation fight yet. I've been watching everything you guys have been discussing in the joint meetings, uh, via the YouTube streams that the Fabley staff put out, which are great, and I haven't made up my mind yet, but I have some concerns. Just a couple of thoughts. One is that I think the financial part is just one part of this, and then are there concerns? And that's a little bit of what I wanted to address tonight. Um, I moved here thirteen years ago, and when I was a younger man, I made a decision that I wanted to have a publishing company, and I wanted to publish my own work, and, um, I published erotica, or pornography. So when I decided that I was going to do this, I did some research about where I wanted to live and work, and I settled on a community in Los Angeles called West Hollywood. And, um, West Hollywood was part of unincorporated Los Angeles in the nineteen seventies, and it was a mecca for the gay and lesbian community in Los Angeles. And they settled that place, but because it was unincorporated, they didn't have their own police force. And at their clubs in the nineteen seventies, there was a lot of violence there, there were assaults and beatings, with no repercussions, because when people would call the police, the police wouldn't respond, cause it was just the gay and lesbians. So in the eighties, Russian immigrants moved into the community, and they formed a really strange coalition between these Russian immigrants and the gay and lesbian people there, and they incorporated. They formed their own small city, about thirty-five thousand people, so that they could have control over their police. And they got them some really cute little uniforms, and got them some bicycles and the biking stuff. And people there felt like they could go out at night, they'd just be themselves and who they are without threats and violence. So I was excited to read about this place, so I moved there in the nineties, and I started my publishing company with two hopes, um, that I would be able to feel secure, that I could write and think and publish what I wanted to with legal protection, and then also that I, um, that I might be able to have a social life there and make friends and be accepted for who I was. And the first part worked there really good. I started my publishing company and it went really well, and I won some awards for the stuff that I published, so it was successful and fulfilling creatively and financially, but not so much socially. I discovered there that by the time I moved there, that the community had become a little bit more conservative. A lot of movie business people moved there, and, uh, they wanted to be really careful about who they associated with, so it was kinda hard for me to make friends. So I moved back to New Jersey where my parents lived, I lived there for about a year. I was probably clinically depressed, I couldn't get out of my pajamas. I watched reruns of the television show Dallas all day long, and at that time, two different groups of friends of mine who knew each other said, "You gotta go check out New Paltz." So I came up here, I spent a day up here in the spring thirteen years ago. I went to the Bistro for lunch, I had a beer at five, and I took a walk on Uginon Street, and by that evening, I knew that I wanted to make my home here, and I found my house. That's the house that I live in now. And, uh, I continued to write and think and publish what I want, and it has gone successfully, but something else has changed. I, uh, I made a lot of friends here in the village, and they know who I am, and they know what I do, and I, I have been able to live here with a greater level of acceptance than I ever imagined possible. And I know that I'm hardly alone in this. Um, one of my good friends who died a few years ago was Jack Goldberg, who owned Jack's Rhythms down there. And, um, I used to spend a lot of time at his shop, and, uh, there was a time in Jack's life when he was getting older. He had a, he had a record shop in Woodstock, and he had this little annex down here in New Paltz, and it was getting to the point that he was getting older, and he couldn't maintain both shops. So he had to talk with his wife, he was trying to decide which shop he should keep, and his wife said, "I think it's obvious." And just, you know, they lived walking distance from the Woodstock shop, and his wife said, "You gotta keep the New Paltz shop, because that's where all your crazy people are." So, um, I got to know a lot of people in the village and in the community from hanging out in his shop, and he wanted to stay in New Paltz, he closed his Woodstock shop, because he felt that, uh, it was impossible for him to fathom living without the friends and connections he had in this place. And I met a lot of people through there who were like me, who were people who might be considered to be marginal people in other places, but who were able to thrive and be accepted here. And, you know, it, it might seem like I'm exaggerating or that my concern is glib, but I, I just wanna remind you all that in, in most places in human history, and in most places in the world, including now, people who are outside the norm, people who think a little bit differently, people who are insistently different in the way that they live, they live under the threat of persecution and violence everywhere. And we have a really unique community in that regard. I was reminded of this last month when I was watching a town board meeting, when, um, in the aftermath of the tragedy in Connecticut, um, the town board was looking at a sharply worded resolution to respond to this, and by the end of that meeting, that resolution ended up being very different, and some would say toothless, and it made me realize that even in some ways, even within the larger community in which I live, um, the town isn't necessarily, necessarily representative of my politics and the kind of person who I am. So I'm looking at this with what we're getting into here with some concern, and, um, I'm just asking you, as my elected representatives, as we enter into this, to, to think about the social side of things, and, and our history here, going back to the Huguenots, and why did we settle this community, and how this place is a safe harbor for so many people like me and others. And let's just be careful about, um, you know, what we're willing to concede, um, when we do this. So I'm just asking you to, to think about that, and as a gift to all of you, I brought in a plainbrag rapper a copy of the pornographic magazine that I published in Los Angeles in the nineteen nineties for your enjoyment or otherwise. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a joke.
Will I be arrested?
Expose it out on camera?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there any other public comment?
Katie, I'm, I'm sorry, Katie?
I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah, but you brought us!
We got a lot of those, too!
Alright, is there not any other, uh, sorry, is there, is there not any other public comment? Um, Sally, you had enough, at least, you had enough?
I have a statement. This evening, I'm resigning as deputy mayor of the village of New Paltz. When we took office, Mayor West appointed me his deputy mayor. For the past eighteen months, I have respected the office of mayor and Mayor West personally. I have been supportive of his positions. In support of his stated promise to be a full-time mayor working for the betterment of the village, I proposed and supported a substantial increase to the mayor's salary. But in recent weeks, it has become clear that I can no longer sit and tolerate his maligning my colleagues and his recent and still continuing defamation of respected community members who have worked long and hard for tax relief for our taxpayers. I believe Mayor West's recent actions are intolerable, unbecoming, and unprofessional for an elected official. I do not wish to be associated with such a behavior. On the issue of consolidation, the mayor and I have never agreed. That's not even an issue. At a time when revenues are shrinking and more money is demanded of our taxpayers, I think it behooves government to streamline itself and to be proactive in providing tax relief. Having been a trustee for eighteen months, I am convinced more than ever that it is time for New Paltz to have one government financially, practically, and governmentally. From the time the mayor joined the Efficiency Project Steering Committee in two thousand eleven as the newly-elected mayor, he has refused to participate or convey his ideas to any of the discussions of the pros and cons of having one government for New Paltz. Instead, he has chosen to stonewall and obstruct. As the ten-member Town-Village Efficiency Committee was finalizing its recommendations, after eighteen months of questioning and debating, did the mayor participate? No. Without any stated reason, the mayor voted no on every recommendation being made to the joint boards, including the primary one, recommending consolidation if and only if it meant a zero tax increase for all residents, town, outside the village and the village. The mayor voted no to pursue mending New York State Finance Law to make this community eligible for a million dollars from the state should it vote to consolidate the two governments. He refused to sign a joint board letter requesting it. The joint boards agreed that more study was needed to see if consolidation was a good idea for New Paltz. Study committees were created... Study committees were created by the joint boards to look at and make recommendations regarding planning, personnel, infrastructure, space, and finance. The mayor is legally the chief budget officer of the village and is, in my opinion, something of a financial e-expert. Yet he refused to serve on the finance study committee. Having relinquished or shirked his duty when his expertise would have been useful, he now feels justified in calling liars those members who have at least had as much public municipal financial experience as he. I respect the wisdom and integrity of my fellow committee members and I stand by the committee's report and his recommendations. I can no longer su- support or be associated with a mayor who denounces citizens working with honesty and integrity for the good of New Paltz. Therefore, I resign as his deputy. But now, as a trustee, I call on both boards to allow New Paltz voters the opportunity to decide their destiny rather than having it dictated to them. I ask that the full text of Jeremiah's case review, that my full text be submitted for the record.
I actually wasn't informed.
I, I wanna make sure it's in the minutes.
Sure. Well, I'm sorry to hear that, Sally. And this is the first time I'm hearing any of that. Uh, I'm sorry about the resignation, not the, the decision. Uh, there's a lot to respond to since I don't have a copy of it in front of me and not, not gonna waste the time going line by line. Basically, two points of disagreement. Um, one is that, up until, as I said in the New Paltz Times this week, and it was accurately, accurately quoted that I am at the moment, for as of now opposed to consolidation, for the same reason that I wrote thirty-five pages of, of commentary on Fairweather's report, um, which didn't get responded to or, or addressed. It's the same reason I voted no on everything, which was, um, an identical reason at every stage of the process, which is that at every step of the process, every public vote taken was taken prematurely and without accurate information. And I think that the conversation we're having, um, where we had a big, big public comment and will have tomorrow and have, uh, our joint meetings is indicative of that. I've never in my life been opposed to consolidation. Like I said last week, frankly, consolidation is too dull a topic to be, to have much of a passionate opinion about on its face. What I am in favor of is honest and thorough public policy. And this has never once in the year and a half I've been a part of it met that standard. From the Fairweather Report to the volunteer committees that were established, to the work that was produced, to the timelines that were set over public objection, to the ignoring of, of the concerns of, of numerous skeptics of consolidation who simply at every step asked for more time to digest what was being discussed before the two boards stepped onto the next, into the next stage of the process. And that's just continued. And that's, um, something you can see in the minutes. You can watch the discussions. It's not, uh, difficult to find, um, through the records. But more importantly is the comment that, that Sally made at the end, which is that because I didn't personally participate in this process, um, I therefore have no legitimate right to dissent and no legitimate right to disagree with the process.
That's the more of a segue.
I sat patiently while you spoke and you can sit patiently while I speak now. Um, the fact, for example, that she said that, um, and thank you for the compliment about my experience, um, with budgets. And, you know, in a democracy in my mind, that it's not a matter of if you're not on the, on, in the group, you don't have a right to speak or to ask questions. And that's how I've been treated in this whole process. So, and it's how others have been treated, not just myself. I just happen to be one, one of the few on the boards who has been asking questions and wondering why we're doing this and what the reasoning is. And frankly, even reading half of the things that have been produced. It's not, if the finance committee's numbers are wrong, and they're wrong. If the assumptions the finance committee makes are wrong, and they are wrong. If there are, um, outright, uh, contradictions within the report itself, um, that's a problem for me. And that problem is not because I was on, on the committee. As Sally said, there's, there are many, many people with expertise and this is what was presented. I'll just give one example. Um, and this is why I call people, uh, this report lie, uh, uh, full of lies. Because when you say with one hand that, for exa- as just a one example, and I have, um, exam- uh, about one point five million of the one point six million, I think is frankly wrong. Three hundred thousand dollars was identified as savings due to consolidation from the town police department. It was, it was in a spreadsheet. However, in the text of the report itself, it was clearly actually said that the, uh, three hundred thousand, this is one example of something that was a, a one-time expenditure in two thousand eleven. Now, when the page one says that and the spreadsheet says this, and the finance committee chair gets up in the middle of his presentation, raises his voice and gives a speech about how anyone who questions this report or votes no, never again complain about higher taxes. This is a problem for me. When the report says we're saving three hundred thousand, we're not, we found three hundred thousand dollars to save. I'm sorry, said that three hundred thousand dollars, there's a three hundred thousand dollar difference between two thousand eleven and, and now. But that's not a, a, a savings due to consolidation. And then the committee turns around and says publicly in the press, in presentations and answers to questions, that one point six million dollars is saved. That three hundred thousand dollars, they're counting towards one point six million, as is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in one-time insurance savings, as is the five hundred thousand, twenty thousand dollars and seventy, or five hundred and twenty, seventy-seven thousand dollars that is not due to consolidation. That they are claiming for consolidation, which makes those things lies. If you know the truth to be one thing and then you tell the public the opposite, that is a lie. And I am embarrassed that this is the level of discourse we're having. I'm embarrassed that everything else is stopping in terms of policy in order to have this conversation. Because this is just common sense and third grade math. That's not a high standard to hold, uh, community people to. And it's not my fault the numbers are wrong. My participation would not have changed that. In fact, it would have just been another no vote, uh, because KT identified some of them. And if you do watch the tapes, there are many, many other instances where the discussion, the finance committee meetings was not about the pros and cons arithmetically. Or where are we gonna find, you know, can we save thirty thousand dollars here and why? Are we buying less paper? Are we using less staples? Are we hiring fewer consultants? The conversation was, where can we find the savings? Because this is now political conversation about consolidation and not a mathematical conversation, not an accounting conversation. And I have a big problem with that. And others do as well. I just happen to be the only one on the boards who feel that way. So, again, I apologize. I apologize, but I, I'm sorry that Sally feels so strongly that she needs to resign. I respect her decision, of course. Um, and we're gonna have this continuing debate tomorrow and meeting after that, meeting after that, meeting after that.
I do think it would be very good if there would be some opportunity for the public to be able to ask questions and have answers given by the finance committee. We have not really had that opportunity.
That was last Tuesday, where we started.
Well, but.
That was the purpose of that meeting, was to answer questions.
It hardly got going because so many questions were asked.
And no answers were given.
Almost no time for answers. So I think that opportunity has to be. But I will say, I understand. We agree. We don't agree.
And we're gonna be mad at each other for a good long time about this.
And this has been very long.
But we're also gonna work, if there's something else we agree on, it's gonna be done for the good of the community despite our anger at each other.
I stand by my statement.
Karen, is there other, I'm sorry, Anna, yes, Stuart.
I, I have a statement as well. I have been informed that the Times-Sheriff Record had an article in the paper today in which the reporter quotes the mayor as questioning the work ethic of trustee Kimbiss and me. I have been in New York City attending New York State Bar Association meetings for the past two days and was not able to answer my telephone when the reporter called me for my comments. I understand that Brian Kimbiss was available for comment before the article was published and was able to respond on his own behalf. While I was saddened to hear that the mayor had, what the mayor had to say about me, I was not surprised based on the mayor's behavior over the last several months. When the four members of the adminis- of this, four new members of this administration took office over one and a half years ago, all of us were most interested in working hard to complete our tasks in behalf of the voters. When Brian Kimbiss joined us, all of the trustees worked with diligence to improve the handling of ongoing village business and attempting to suggest, discuss, and implement new ideas to improve life in the village. The board is charged with managing the finances of the village and making policy decisions for the village. This is why the voters elected us and we all take our jobs very seriously. We have had three regular meetings a month and for more than nineteen months, we have been in office, I have not missed a, a meeting. While the trustees hold part-time positions, they are tasked with being liaisons to many boards and commissions. The trustees have worked diligently with their assigned groups and have carried back important information to the board. The boards and commissions have been pleased with our work. I know that I have taken quite a bit of time away from my law practice to carry out this important public service. Therefore, I believe that there has to be some other agenda behind the mayor's complaint. I believe it has something to do with the fact that the trustees ask questions about certain projects and actions of the mayor and at times disagree with him. This is the job we were elected to do. The trustees have tried to work with the mayor and support his projects, even when we would have done them in a different manner. The mayor is one vote on the policymaking board and should not act harshly against board members who have legitimate concerns about what is going on. Anger, bullying, and wild accusations have no place in this democratic process. The voters who elected the trustee had confidence that they would act diligently in carrying out the task of local government. And the trustees will continue to work hard to continue to earn that trust. And I ask that that be put in the comments below as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Stuart. Um, I'm actually convenient that Jeremiah is here. Uh, that article came out of a Facebook post that I wrote about how the village elections are coming up in the spring. And I would not, I didn't, and I said that I would, didn't, actually didn't know if you or Brian were running. But said that I would not be supporting either one if you chose to run again and was looking for people who are willing to work. Now, we can have disagreements about what work means. But one of the, and I actually make sure to mention that you, I think this was in the article, that, you know, Stuart is a complete gentleman, but I want someone with a better work ethic. The example I can tell you right now is that, for example, when I was approached by the fire department about why we hadn't had a liaison most of last year, I asked Stuart, uh, who had asked to be the liaison, why he hadn't gone. And Stuart, your response to me was, no one told me when the meetings were. For me, I think I would prefer to work with somebody who holds themselves to a, a more, um, proactive level of engagement with the assignments they request. Again, it's irrelevant. As I, as a soldier of mine, I don't remember this made in the article. You know, I didn't, this, we were never, I have never campaigned. I was never supporter, uh, didn't vote for you, didn't vote for Brian. Um, and frankly, it's, um, the, uh, the, uh, you know, I, I might have that, but, um, this is actually the democratic process. If I disagree with a politician, it is my right, whether I'm mayor or not, to recruit candidates, to support candidates of my choice, for whatever reasons I choose. I didn't solicit that article. I didn't push it out. Uh, Jeremiah called me. It was a long conversation about a lot of things and this was a small part of it at the end. Um, it's updated editor, he, what actually gets into the newspaper articles. The, the major issue for me is that I see much more potential than this board is, 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 is using. This collection of people is quite possibly the most gifted constellation of trustees I've ever served with. And yet is accomplished much less than any other board I've ever served on. The things that I think this group of people are capable of include things like pulling the entire village of New Paltz off the grid. I think it's fully within our power to eliminate property taxes as a revenue source. And yet I can't get people to go to our fire department meetings or attend another liaisonship request. I never in my life would attack anyone for questioning me for whatever reason. What I do have a problem with is people using this form of board meetings to spring surprise, um, challenges and attacks and questions on myself or anyone else, um, without any expectation that an answer will be given. For example, one of the repeated, uh, problems of this board has been that it took, I believe, I counted up to six or seven meetings, even more conversations and, and God knows how many other mechanisms, simply to get the trustees to understand that, under New York State law, trustees do not direct staff. It's a simple question that could have been looked up easily simply with an icon handbook you all have, yet no one bothered. And those are the kinds of challenges I have a problem with. Questions that are easily answered by staff or a phone call and email during the day, um, that instead get sprung at the last second, as I believe we're gonna witness tonight with the last minute discussion of email and discussion of website, uh, when every single person sitting at the table is fully aware of how to get agenda items on the agenda. Uh, is fully aware of our collective discussion of the need for supporting documentation to keep each other ahead of the meeting so we can ask questions. I take this very seriously and I expect the trustees to do the same. And that includes informing yourselves of what you're interested in. And if you can't answer your own questions, you shoot me an email, which I answer every single time regardless of how angry I am at somebody. But that's just not what happens. Instead, we have little mini show trials and we have little last minute agenda items that we're prepared to kind of play gotcha here at the table. That's not indicative to me of a seriousness. That's not indicative to me of, of a willingness to work on behalf of constituents. And I don't know what it's indicative of, but it's something that, um, I find to be incredibly frustrating. And I will continue to find it incredibly frustrating. And I'll continue to do what I've chosen to do, which is if there's a question you could ask easily of some, of a department head, you have their phone numbers. Uh, if you, if it's an email that you want, uh, you want to send me an email, ask me a question, I will respond. But I'm just not gonna play the, the game of sitting when we have other work that could be done, that we could be doing, um, being the target of gotcha questions at every meeting. So, again, that's a longer conversation, which as I've said over and over, I'm happy to have. But I'm not really happy to have it right here and now on camera with no really background, no other information. So that's that.
I, I guess I just found it very difficult, uh, to believe that, that anyone, including you, who's been involved with me in office would think that I have a poor work ethic. I've been on many liaison, uh, assignments and gone to countless meetings. I, I, I did miss some of the fire. You have to remember that I wasn't in office until, uh, the first one would have been in July.
Last June was when this started.
Right. And so I, I missed some of those. I, I've been to several of them. I met with the, uh, the president of the fire department to talk about things. I'm, I'm also looking into other things about, uh, how we can help the fire department in their ongoing recruitment policies and, and pensions and so forth. So, uh, I think I've spent the time on it. And when you take all of the liaison shifts and the, the time that has been spent and if you're really aware of how much that time is, I think that's, uh, really unfair and wrong that, you know, to say that I, I don't have work ethic. I think that's really insulting and incorrect. And, and I, and I know you're not gonna agree with that and that's fine, but, and, and why do I have to say it now? Because it comes out in the paper and, and I have to respond to that because I, I think it's just totally erroneous. So that's my position. And that's your position, but I don't think.
There's one, one, one key point, and this is the only thing I'll say to this, is that the only way to judge whether we are accomplishing anything to hit this table is what we vote on, is what we implement. You can go to all the meetings you like about a project, but if it doesn't lead to a policy result, nothing has happened. It's only conversations. We're here to, as you said, actually, we're here to implement policy, not simply to have conversations with, with volunteers. And so when, when you start to see what actually hits the table, that's where the, well, rubber meets the road, whatever the bad metaphor is. Um, that's what matters, is changing, making our constituents' lives better, not simply attending lots of meetings. So again, I, third point, I.
Policy decisions that have been made since we in- entered into office, I think a large number of those have come through the trustees.
Yeah.
And, and their policy now and their local laws and their, because of what the trustees did. So I, you know, I don't, I don't think that's particularly a valid comment either.
Well, we're not in political campaign at the moment, so we don't need to.
Well, I don't plan to be in one, but that's, that's fine.
I think I'd like to comment a little bit, um, just regarding the comment on liaison shifts because it's my understanding that you've missed a couple liaison shifts as well. And, uh, you know, we had that little issue with your email being full for three months. And we had that issue with you not wanting to keep track of your office hours or not being in your office when we need to find you. And I think it's just extremely hypocritical for you to make the comments that you made about us when you're not necessarily looking at yourself, uh, with the, in, in the clear mirror. Talking about making, uh, about emails. I mean, you asked us to send you an email, something pleasant. I mean, the emails that you send to trustees and department heads, and we're, we're gonna get, I guess, a little further into this possibly, are atrocious. And the language you use when you speak to us is horrific. And there is not a level of, I can't. And there is not a level of, I can't see any professionalism. I mean, you publicly said that if we consolidate governments, you will immediately fire Chris Marks. I mean, that.
That's not an accurate quote.
I mean, I, I read it. I, 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 I read it, I read it on Facebook, so I mean, unless it's not there anymore. Okay, but you, you said he has no place in government, blah, blah, blah. Um, the, the point being is, at the same time, you, you know, you sent out an email saying that I was gonna fire all these employees, and I never said that. And then you went out and said that you'll intentionally fire one person, who was just speaking to a process just like you are. Um, I just, I, 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 it's hard for me not to laugh when you say these things and you sit here with a straight face and, and try to call Stuart of all people, like, you know, you wanna take a shot at me? You know, I, I guess I couldn't make it to that, uh, the tech meetings, you know, again, I, I do work a lot, so it is tough for me to make daytime meetings, but, you know, whatever, you'll say that's an excuse. That's fine, we, I could say, you know, whatever you're doing today, but, I mean, that's a whole other thing, but, uh, I, I just, I can't, I can't understand how you, you do the things you do and say the things you say with a straight face here in front of the camera when, you know, so, when everyone sees what you do. Everyone sees the way you act. I, you know, you're gonna mhm me, you can, whatever, but, I mean, it's just highly unprofessional and, you know, when you act the way you do, your words are gonna catch up to you and people are gonna see what you actually are and.
Amen to that.
Amen to that.
And this is a good example of the kind of conversations I think are really.
So we save them for emails and then we, and then we say horrible things, uh, personal attacks in email? Is that when we do it? Or, when, when is that the appropriate time?
It isn't.
It isn't. That's a very good answer.
It isn't. Um, and 'cause I'm not, 'cause this is the kind of, see, the problem with conversations like this, if you're watching at home, is that when you start down a road of, um, attacks of things back and forth about defense, now, Stuart's statement and Sally's, of course, I think are fair. I said certain things and, and I said that certain things which I believe to be true, and in the newspaper, you're free to respond to that. Sally, of course, takes a principled stand on a disagreement or consolidation, feels the need to resign and explain why, absolutely fair. Um, but it would be honest, I mean, I can't think of it. All I can say is, and I'll just, look, I'll just put it this, who, who do you believe more? 'Cause if you wanna play a he said, she said game, that's all it comes down to, is who do you trust personally, who, whatever. Because I could respond point by point, and I think that I'm right and you're wrong, and that wouldn't persuade you and you wouldn't persuade me, and all it would do is waste everyone's, everyone's time here. The work wouldn't get done anymore efficiently, nothing more would be accomplished. Um, and we have wasted a whole lot of hours and the public's time.
Right.
So, um, if anyone is interested in, at, in the audience or at home, about, um, what Brian was discussing, I'll, I'll share some of the emails, I'll, I'll explain to you. But I'm not interested in getting to this, uh, at a board meeting. I know we don't have much of an agenda tonight. But, um, it's bad practice, it's, we should be here to work. If you have personal problems with me or someone else, you should work them, work them out away from the table and out of board meetings. Um, if you're not willing to do that, sit and stew, but don't bring enough of the meetings. And that's all I personally have to say about that. Unless, uh, there's other board announcements.
No, I think, uh, the, the comment about, uh, email sharing emails, I think that's fair. And I think, uh, you know, we'll have to share the emails and we'll see who is saying what. I think that's probably the best way to go, so.
If that's how you choose to spend your time, then I guess.
I mean, I, I would choose to spend my time in a better way, except that the person who's supposed to be, you know, there and helping us all refuses to work with anyone and act in a way that is just not conducive to getting anything done. So we all work together outside of you, instead of working with you. And it's not like I haven't reached out to you a million times, but you know what? Let's not talk about this anymore, because, you know, at this point, it's, it, you know, there's no going back, right?
Fair enough. Alan, were you trying to say something?
I just, is public comment over?
Just go ahead, this one.
Um, it just amazes me that you take affront at the fact that these two announcements came out of the blue to you.
Oh, I supposedly don't take affront to that.
Well, whatever, you said you did.
No, I'm sorry, I was making a distinction, but go ahead, go on, control it, please.
And yet, you put things, obviously, that we're not aware of on Facebook, things get picked up by the newspaper, and they get hit with things, not knowing where you're coming from. You could, if you have a question, Stuart's available. You have never called him, asked him, emailed him about any of the things that you put in the paper.
I have, in fact, it's where my example came from.
Not about his work ethic, not.
It's where my example came from.
No, I'm sorry.
Why has he not been attending the fire department meetings? Was it a direct question to Stuart?
Yeah, and he answered it. And he answered it, and he started, and he was going, and he's also doing a lot more than that. Spends incredible amount of time, has letters from boards that he has served on, thanking him for being such a wonderful liaison, but you're not aware of any of those things. Those things don't hit the paper or hit your Facebook page. If that's your social media, then you wanna inform the people who you're gonna put that about. You wanna tell them that that's what's coming out on your Facebook page, or are gonna hit the newspaper. And the things that, that you say, I mean, there are ways of criticizing the finance study, or whatever. But the language that you use is not respectful, it's demeaning. It disparages people's character. It's not appropriate. You act as a dictator, you don't act as a mayor.
I only, I only have one vote as well.
We know that, but you don't seem to know that.
I absolutely do.
You have made the comment that they can do whatever they want, but you'll get around them somehow, and you will put your agenda forward. You have said that.
Oh, okay, yes, let me, let me address that, that's fine, 'cause that's a fair enough point. The, um, well, one thing is this, is, uh, Stuart and Brian are politicians. They have, they're in the run for public office, they have one public office. And if I, as another politician, looking forward just simply, three, close it, three months from now, to who's gonna be sitting on this board, I have every right to discuss privately or publicly why I would support or not a politician running for public.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about their character.
That's, that was one of your points, excuse me, excuse me. The other thing is, um, whether or not I'm too mean to people or disparaging, uh, frankly, is, at this point, irrelevant to me. Because when, for example, I'm faced with personally, not, I don't, me as one, a board member, but in terms of, as you said, trying to get policies through, when my colleagues close down the, the possibility of debate and discussion, when persuasion is closed, as when, for example, at a board meeting, Ariana and Brian, um, just, uh, said to me, um, when we were discussing the stream debate, that they were both gonna vote against that project, even if it saved forty fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money.
That's not what you said.
That to me has.
Didn't we all vote in favor of that?
Right. No, you did, se- several months later, yeah.
Yeah, we did openly support that.
Ultimately, of course.
We supported you, Jason.
Ultimately, of course, but.
Openly.
At the meet, I'm scared, excuse me. But, it's also the comment that you made. And so I have to, both, long before you voted in favor of it, I'm looking at a project which I know and have the facts and numbers to prove is good for the community, is an improvement to the park, uh, could save money. And I've got two of the, my colleagues on the board saying, it doesn't matter how good this project is, they're voting no. That closes a lot of options in terms of persuasion and debate. And that looks, excuse me, Brian, um, it's, that's exactly what happened.
It's definitely not what's happened. You can lie if you want.
Even if later, you all, you voted in favor of it. At, uh, back in September October, that was the lay of the land. That's, that was what I was faced in trying to get a policy enacted, that I knew and had the evidence was good. Um, that wasn't my decision, and that's, there were, there are other examples of that, some of them involving consolidation, though not as many as kind of the black and white arguments seem to portray. When persuasion and debate, and honest debate is close to me as a politician, I'm going to look at what other tools I have available. And, yes, I know more of those tools than my colleagues. It's not because I'm smarter than them or anything else, it's somebody that's been doing this longer. I will use whatever tool that I have available to do what I think and know to be right. At the end of the day, there's very little that I can do, except set some of the terms about, under which we have the debate. And I would do that every time. If there's a power or a duty or authority, um, that, that mayors have, for example, the trustees don't, I will use it. As, uh, Ariana thanked me and praised me for at the Park Point hearing, when I said that if Wilmerick was not gonna provide accurate data to the town planning board, I had looked into my ability as a mayor to subpoena information. I will subpoena people if it's what needs to happen, because I have the authority to do so, because the people of this community gave me that authority. And that's the endpoint of this. If I'm too mean, or people think I'm too disrespectful, or I'm, or, um, or as Brian believes, if I'm dishonest, that's not for them to say, it's for the voters to say, and voters can vote me out, they did it once before. And then they voted me back in, so we'll see how it turns out if I would even run again in a couple years. Um, I'm not gonna apologize for using every tool in my office that I can find to advance the policies that I got chosen to run and the people's community elected me to implement. Um, if people disagree with the way I go about that, I, I'm sorry. Um, but I'm going to do what works and what, not what's nice. So, I'm not really sure what else to say.
Can I make a comment to that? 'Cause I think more of what we're referring to is, let's say the board of trustees all thinks we should have informational meetings, where we have all the department heads and have an open discussion of government and how things are working in the village, and you're the one dissenting vote and you say, I'm not doing that, and then it doesn't happen. Or, like the time.
Do you want me to address that, or no?
Well, you can just address them all after I'm finished. Or the time where we all wanted you to write the letter to Kevin Cahill for the grant, and you said, I'm not doing that. And we ended up getting the grant money from Kevin Cahill. It's, it's not about you pushing your agenda, because that's fine, everyone has the duty to push their agenda. It's the fact that when a representation of the rest of the voters in the community have something that they wanna see done, you do everything you can to stand in the way of that if you don't agree with it. And I mean, I guess those, those are your tools, but.
Let me, let me, before we get too far from that, then, because this is getting interesting to me. Um, the two examples you gave are examples where the board of trustees attempted to do something that had no authority to do.
We do, we just did it in the wrong way. We can set a policy, we, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. We can set a policy for all salaried, we can set policy for all salaried employees to show up here. We decided not to do that and instead tried to have a discussion and have you help us achieve this goal. So, yes, we can do that.
Our village attorney disagrees with you.
Our village attorney did not see it that way.
What the board tried to, with those two examples, what the board said, and it was your, I believe it was your motion, um, this gets back to the trustees, um, working outside of this meeting. If any of the board of trustees has, uh, any question about a particular or general question about what's going on in whatever, the DBW, doesn't matter, pick a department, um, you all have Blue's phone number, um, you all have his email.
That's not the point.
It is, well, that's not.
The point is, we wanna have an, an open discussion. You wanna talk about like why the policy is the way the policy is, that's fine. I have Blue's phone number, great, I can call him during the day, that doesn't get him here with everyone else in the same room.
And since the, since the, um, the board of trustees has no authority to direct staff, as we, as I addressed earlier, our village attorney, I checked with our village attorney, this is, is an example of that. To command staff to come in after hours, um, to, to discuss anything, um, is directing staff, which the board of trustees has no authority to do.
But we have, we have the ability to write policy, and instead I chose not to write that policy and outline people's jobs, but what we wanted you to do was help us do that. And you, the only one who dissented on that vote, and you said, I'm not doing it, instead of just.
There was no authority to have a vote, which I explained at the meeting. The vote was meaningless.
Oh, Jason, but you could, you could have helped us do that.
You can vote to change the name of Milltown to Danbury, but it doesn't mean anything.
But we can adopt the policy, we chose not to do that. The point being is you're saying, well, we did it the wrong way. But with your help, we could have done it, and instead you chose to obstruct.
And, and what I tried to help afterwards, actually, was, I went back to, spoke to every department head about whether this is something they would be interested in doing.
And they said they were.
Stop, stop it.
And then, and then what happened to the meeting?
Are you really?
It's months from now.
You're not even gonna, you're not even allowed, I mean, Brian.
Not even, not even.
And folks, this is.
This is exactly what it is. Maybe I'll write you an email later and call you the C-word.
So, for, for, for all of you who might be actually interested in answering, um, what the, what Brian was proposing was to, and, and I believe even Sally had a, had an issue with the, the tone and commanding tone of the letter. But it would have enforced all the employees regardless of whether they wanted to or still, or whatever, there's any other reason, and there were good reasons, I'm not going to publicly.
Okay.
That, um, to come in and kind of do a command performance, um, quarterly. Now, what I, when I went back to the, to the department heads, what, uh, in trying to find some kind of consensus, as a matter of fact, I asked them, uh, they weren't, that for various reasons was not something they were willing to do. The, which means for me is, I'm not going to force, uh, the department heads to do something that they don't wanna do, 'cause they are the professionals who do most of everything around here. Um, when the trustees are not willing to reach out and have their own questions answered in their own time. What they were willing to do, actually, was to have a meeting, um, during office hours or near the end of the day, so they weren't traveling. Um, and there were some, a couple other conditions, and I sent that out to the, the, all four of you and didn't get a single response to that.
What actually my policy, what actually my policy was, was to have a group informational session where we would hear from each of the department heads as the things they were doing, and we could all have an open forum and discuss what's happening on our government and where we can improve. So, I wouldn't necessarily call it a pr- command performance, I would call it as everyone working together as a community and getting to understand what happens a little bit better. And yet, you said something out about having a closed doors meeting of department heads during the workday, but, you know, some of us actually work other jobs and wouldn't necessarily be able to do that, and then it's not open to the public, and then the public can't see what's happening. So it kind of defeats the purpose, but thank you for doing that, you're right. That would have been much better, having a closed doors meeting with everybody. I mean, that's, yeah, no, you're good.
Um, were there any other announcements from the board?
I, I do wanna say one thing. I mean, when people of differing points of view come together, there's always going to be some dissension. And that's to be expected. But I've always found and believe that collegiality and the attempt to sit and talk together and talk it out is far more effective. I also believe that if you have a position, and that position is inviolate and is not going to change, that it behooves you to say, I am opposed and I will never change my mind. I can deal with that better than pretending more study is needed, more study is needed, transparency is needed, transparency is needed, and, oh, by the way, you're a liar. I find that really unacceptable, as a human being.
It's also my opposition, never has been.
It did happen, Jason, it's in the paper, you called.
Now, yes.
Me a liar, and, or you called the committee liars, I have the paper, I have the vote.
Oh, no, I'm not, I, I explained that earlier, yes, I totally.
And I think, just from a personal standpoint, you need to apologize to me for that. It's an affront, it is not who I am, it is not the way I have ever treated you in any circumstance at any time at this table.
True, and you know what, I will apologize to you for it.
Thank you.
Uh, and my last.
I think you also need to apologize to Stuart.
No, I don't believe I do.
Well, I think you did.
Don't worry about it.
Because, to say, and if, no, I'm not done.
Uh, well, you're also in front of the meeting, and.
His work ethic is not there, is.
I'm sure his work ethic in other areas of his life is spectacular. I have not seen evidence of it. It may exist, and I bet.
Then you're not, then you don't know what's going on with the board.
And when I change my, when I see that evidence and change my mind, I'll absolutely publicly apologize in the same venue, absolutely.
Well, then you need to spend some time looking and asking.
But I'm also trying, I'm also being honest with you about what I believe is happening on the board. I don't, I know you disagree with me, and obviously, being mayor of Stuart, you have a much more day-to-day understanding of what he's actually working on than I do, too. Um, and like I said, if I see, if I'm proven wrong, as I've always have, I will say that publicly, without, without problem. Uh, which brings me actually to the point about Sally, excuse me, Sally. Which is that I know that you firmly believe that from day one I've been opposed to consolidation. But I have been honest, absolutely honest with what my position has been since day one. Is that I didn't, in my experience, see a lot of potential. And I, if I was gonna have my mind changed, it needed to see the evidence. I was, uh, I was told by you repeatedly, when, when the, the failings in many of the other arenas of this whole process became clear, uh, last fall and winter, the finance committee was kind of our saving grace. The finance committee is where the hard dander was gonna rest, was where the, where the proof was gonna be, that's the pudding, is that, that's a proof and pudding, yeah, whatever it is. And when that came out, um, when I had gotten that, the early draft, very early, too early to be useful, to be honest, where some of these things were laid out, I had a conversation with you and Nancy, and I said, this is not gonna be good enough. And when it comes out that it is exactly as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
In your opinion.
And that, my opinion's all that counts, or my opinion.
No, that's, that's fair.
Because this is my position, that's the only thing that counts, is my opinion.
It would have been better had you participated, then we could have had.
And we've done that, but.
A good fight.
I did not become against consolidation until the finance committee report came out. And even that is conditional, I'm not opposed to consolidation. And even that is conditional. I'm not opposed to consolidation on its face, as, on principle, for political reasons, for anything else. I'm opposed to consolidation as it is now because we do not have the data or the information to honestly and accurately present even to the public what the impacts of consolidation are gonna be. I'm opposed to bad public policy.
You said at the first meeting, "We're gonna fight it tooth and nail."
Yeah.
Tooth and nail, that's what you said. I'm gonna fight consolidation tooth and nail. Yes, yes, yes.
That was, that was part, that, yes, it, it's, it's an event. This is the thing, is you need to read the whole section.
Oh, you said, "If, if the report isn't good, I might fight it tooth and nail."
The process.
Had even done to work.
Process.
Oh, you're gonna fight the process tooth and nail?
All right, well, this is done.
It, it, this is unimportant.
It's not important, it's unproductive.
My objection to it is, and it's the same thing I will say to Katie. For whatever reasons, you have opposed consolidation, that is fine.
That's not, that's not true.
That is fine with me-
It's not true, Sally.
-to take that position. It is true, Jason. Read the minutes going back and back and back. You have, and I have no problem with that. As long as we're honest. I support consolidation. You do not. I have worked very hard. You don't like the work I've done. Then you need to take the time to make your case to prove consolidation is wrong, and you haven't done it.
That's a whole other road that we should go down.
No.
Because you shouldn't, it's about being negative and, and why wouldn't you propose a policy?
Let's get on with our business, cause this is not getting any worse.
Exactly. All right, I move to a, uh, pass the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And who wants to do the discussion email, whatever that is?
Uh, yeah, I can do it. Um, so I made a call into the Office of Open Government, um, trying to find out about foiling documents and how we could gain access, um, as a Board to emails, uh, between you and the department heads. Because they're, well, not just department heads, but, uh, members of our staff. Um, and I was told by the Assistant Director that foiling would be difficult and we'd get redacted answers and, uh, not necessarily-
Why would you give redacted answers?
What, because there's only-
You're on the Board, you get personnel information, like, the public, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna give personnel information out. Why would you get redacted?
In a foil request, there's only certain things that you can get. But I found out that we as a Board can just move to request any and all communications between, uh, the Mayor and, um, various parties. So I have, um, a relating, uh, opinion from the Committee on Open Government, the most recent one, and I have a motion that I'd like to read.
You also filed a foil request.
What?
You also filed a foil request.
Oh, well, this isn't a foil request. This is, this is outside of a foil request. We don't, we don't actually have to foil the documents. We just direct that the employees provide them to us, and they have to do so. Um, so, I will read the quest. Um, "Requesting the performance of performing our duties as duly elected trustees of the Village Board, I order release of all emails between the Mayor and the Village employees listed as follows: Treasurer, Clerk, Village Planner, Building Inspector, and the Head of the DPW. This request is to be filled. Within forty-eight hours, um, printed copies, one for each trustee of each email, to be sealed in envelopes and held by department heads until picked up by each trustee."
Yeah, please have a physical copy, so I, of your request, just so I can get it out.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be writing, cause it's, it's sloppy.
You don't need to, everything just go back to last year and a half, or less than twice, the last, what time, I mean, you don't have terries, I assume.
We're, we're gonna say from January of, uh, twenty twelve, twenty twelve.
One year's long. Was that the, was that the whole, uh, was that motion for a broader email discussion?
What?
That was, is that specifically the proposal?
Yeah, and I guess we'll have a further discussion.
Second, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't, do I vote, or is that?
Yeah, why not? If you want to, if you're, if you're into it.
I guess, I guess abstaining because it's my emails, I don't know. All right, and then who's the discussion website?
On December twelfth of last year, um, I'm gonna read from our minutes. Deputy Mayor Rhodes moved to allow a temporary website, and the temporary website will be administered in the same matters, manner as the current website. The temporary site will be owned by the village and have the same access and protections as the current site. At the second meeting in January, the Board will have a recommendation from the Mayor regarding the plan in place. A general timeline, I'm getting the SharePoint site, website, website up and running. At that time, the Mayor will recommend if the village should or should not go forward with the revised contract. Trustee Glenn requested that there be a financial analysis comparison between the cost of the revised contract and the cost of implementing the SharePoint program. By the end of business on, on December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, the temporary website must be turned over to the village. Trustee Kimbiss seconded. Um, Trustee Kimbiss requested a friendly amendment that the current website has a link to the temporary website on the front page. Deputy Mayor Rhodes accepted the friendly amendment from Trustee Kimbiss. Deputy Mayor Rhodes stated that she wanted it reflected in the minutes that the Board has agreed to taking vote on this matter, even though the second meeting in January is a work document with five ayes motion passed. Um, where's our link?
Uh, I thought all that was addressed at the last minute, that's not necessary now.
Why is it not necessary when we have documents that Katie has to spend nine, nine hours getting the finance stuff up? Where Katie has to spend so many hours getting these documents on the website. I would think that in nine hours, we probably could have gotten all of it on the blog. So, where's our link when we voted on this? I would like to know why, when we vote on something as a Board and pass it with five ayes, it doesn't happen.
Well, the link is, we thought was unnecessary, but I'll make that tomorrow if you'd like.
That's what you said in December.
Yes, I know, and as I said at our last meeting when we went through the rest of it, was, uh, that was act, that's, that was a question physically asked, and it didn't seem necessary. So, I'll put it up now.
It's necessary because people in the community are feeling like the mayor cannot see documents that are necessary.
I think we just had totally public comments.
All of the things that, yeah, that we got in public comment, all of the things with your, "Oh, let's have public participation." That would increase our public participation, let's do it.
Interesting that you mocked that, interesting. But, um, the link, I mean, if you think it's necessary, it'll go up. I did not do it. The answer was specifically, but why it didn't happen
Yeah.
was because if, at the point, it was, um, excuse me?
You said, "This is what I wanna do on my Saturday nights," and I assume you must have just been busy on Saturday nights.
I do sometimes not work all weekend, actually.
This was for fun, this was not work, you said.
So are you interested in answering your question, or is this more of an attack me publicly thing?
I, I want an answer. I wanna see it.
It's the same answer that I gave you last, uh, no, I'm sorry, the answer, well, the answer I gave you last time was it seemed not necessary. And I try not to do work that's redundant or unnecessary when we already have a solution in progress.
Right, but it's not up and running, and this could have been up a month ago.
Sure.
And we could have had all of this information for the public on December twenty-sixth, like we said in this. And that was before we had the information regarding the revised contract, which we got an email from Katie, "Thank you for meeting with them," on January seventh.
Yeah, and like we discussed back in December, the revised thing, even if we pulled the trigger-
This is our last meeting in December.
Even if the, even if we had pulled the trigger on the revised in December, it would be several months. I set this thing up on my own.
Right, and you said it would be up by the twenty-sixth, and that's what we voted on.
Excuse me. Again, you're doing another, another show trial, or is this an actually honest question, you'd like an honest answer to? Because it doesn't sound like you really care about it.
I want the website up, that's all I want. I just want the link up. I don't really care what your answer is.
Then don't ask the question.
I want the link up tomorrow. I want the community to be able to see all of our documents, all of our minutes, everything that people are not being able to look at right now.
Uh, and all the questions that we have been asked, that we have been criticized for not answering, can't go up on the website now because there's no room. And I, I'm gonna have to agree, I'm gonna have to agree with Ariana, Jason. We did make this action, and you said you would turn it over to Katie.
By the end of business on, on December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve.
And she can't put stuff up, at least that's what she says, she can't get it up, and there's no way to link the question, that people are asking questions to consolidation. They wanna see it on the website.
Katie, is that true, we can't physically put the questions up on the website?
A-
I mean, they're existing with it. Cause, we're, ours is the only, we, we actually, the only way for people to get this information. I mean, the town, I believe, is still, has nothing, so it's gonna be unasked.
Actually.
Is that, Sally just said, "We can't even have the question." Is that true, or no?
Actually, we're still working on the minutes from the meeting, we will have been particularly-
Alabro, please. I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, Sally. We've been particularly meticulous on the minutes from last week's meeting because we want to make sure that they are as completely presenting as equal aside as possible, so that no one feels that their question was belittled, not paid attention to. So we have been meticulous in doing those minutes. That's, that's a different thing than how long it took me to get the reports up. It is not that, it's, it's not that we will not be unable to put the minutes up, we, we, even if I have to put them as one page at a time, in some ways, like you saw on the front page, I was able to, to work out a solution to that. We're just still working on the minutes so that they, that, that nothing is glossed over, that no, I mean, technically speaking, we could have, they could be very short minutes, and that would be truly unfair to both parts, both people who have a feeling about that. So we have been very, very careful about trying to make sure that everybody's input is taken into, into account in minutes, and, and I'm just still working on them. I, I hope to have them done shortly.
There are two different, there, there are two different issues, Katie. We, yes, we need the questions that people have asked. It's been now more than a week since we had the meeting and all of these questions were collected. And we don't have them to answer. That's different than what I'm saying. We do have questions that have been answered that need to go on the website, and there is no website to put them on.
Yes, we still have a website, it's just not-
It, because that was the point of why you were gonna link yours.
It was cause others were clumsy, not-
The difficulty in putting things on the website is, is the question. And the time it takes in which to do it, that is a difficult thing.
It, it is difficult, um, but we are, we are trying to get as much information posted as quickly as possible.
But for the website, that's the issue.
Katie, I don't wanna be accused of not answering questions.
No, ma'am, it's-
Because, one, I don't have the questions, two, there is not a link yet.
Why don't you watch the video?
Hmm?
Just watch the video. That was the answer the Finance Committee gave for where we can find answers, right?
People have asked questions, Jason.
I know.
Mr. Russo has questions.
Well, those were emails. We have those for the Finance Committee to answer right now.
That's not my point. He asked that they be put on the website, the answers. That can't be done.
Did you have the answer?
I, yes.
Okay, that, I didn't realize, that was, that was crazy.
And the point is that the questions that come into the Consolidation Efficiency Committee can't get on the website, cause there's no way to link it, and I thought, now, I mean, granted, I do not know about these things, but I understood you had developed an extra website that was going to be linked to
Correct.
with the clerk only having access to it until the new website that revised and those people are doing is done, which we know is not going to be for a while. But the whole thing was that you had a temporary solution, and the temporary solution would, I think, be the solution for what we need. But I-
Either one.
I find it very frustrating to hear you say, "We haven't answered questions" when I don't have the ability to get the questions to the public and their answers. And I don't even have the list of questions from the last meeting.
You can always, have you tried?
So-
Hey, I mean, have you tried, is what I'm asking?
I'm going on the basis of what you sat here and told me that you would do. And that is that you would put this website up on, with Katie, and that all of the reports from all of the committees and all the consolidation material, the original fair weather report, the recommendations of the Consolidation Efficiency Committee to the Joint Boards, and everything that has happened with consolidation since then. And that's supposed to be up on our website, and it isn't.
Most all of that is up on the website, I think. Right, wait, Brian-
And that was the whole point of the temporary website.
Question. Um, when, when did we get the email stating that revised was the solution? When did you have that meeting with those people?
January seventeenth.
January. And so we had this meeting in December stating that we had said like two or three days later, it was around Christmas time, we said, "We're gonna, we're gonna pass it over in two days. After Christmas, you would start uploading the documents." Is that, am I, I'm correct in stating that, right? Okay, so, at what point did we decide that we're not going to do this anymore? Because, Katie, I'm sure you sent the Mayor an email stating, "Hey, you're supposed to send me over this documentation." So how, how did it-
Katie, Katie has access to that, and she and I were both uploading the documents to that.
To that.
To the WordPress then.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so why did the, when, when was it decided the link's not gonna go up? I mean, it was a week after, it was two weeks after, we still hadn't heard from Revis. Why didn't we just post the link with the documents that are already up there currently?
During the quietness of Christmas vacation, I realized that I personally don't know enough about SharePoint to be able to, to give a fair answer. So I made some phone calls, trying to find someone who could give me a fair answer, how long will this take?
Sure.
The whole process. I was able through research to track down a SharePoint architect.
Sure.
We didn't, and, and we, I was
Right.
in the process of trying to find someone who could give me a fair answer, when she gave a, within the hour of the conversation, and she gave me the fair answer, we then turned to Revis to ask them who owns the, who owns the, uh, the information and what their emergency database is.
I got all that. I got, I got all that. I mean, that, rock and roll, that's great. Good, good due diligence, good homework. I wish it would have happened months ago, that's not your fault. My question is, we should have had that link to the website up within days. It's just posting a link onto the website, it should be the top link. I mean, this is what we stated, this was the motion of the Board, this was five votes. At what point did we say, "We're not doing that," and why didn't we?
I can't remember. All I remember is that it seemed like it was irrelevant, it had become redundant, I mean, not relevant.
I mean, I don't understand-
This is the problem with, with, with just dumping things on the agenda and expecting answers. I don't have everything memorized, and neither does Katie. I could look up any answer you showed.
How could you?
Just let me know.
It's December twenty-sixth, that's a minute in front of me.
That wasn't, that wasn't the point.
We already set something in motion.
Maybe you're missing the point then.
We already set something in motion, this should have happened. It's not like, "Well, this might be redundant." Redundancy, we don't even have half the stuff on our website that we need. So whether you think it's redundant, whether you don't think it's redundant, we asked for it to happen, why, it, it takes three seconds to post a link. You, you and the Clerk are currently spending village hours posting things to this website that is not connected to our village website. That's work unrelated to the village until it becomes the village website. Why was it not done?
I think the point is that we had five votes for something that didn't get done. And I would like to know, how is it possible that we can vote unanimously for something and have it not happen?
Uh, I'll have to look through the emails from me, Katie, and Brian and see if there was a reason, uh-
But, but that's not, that's not the point, Jason. The point is when we vote on something, shouldn't it go through?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and if it's not going to go through, there should be another motion made to retract that motion. That is the process.
Mm-hmm.
Am I wrong?
Okay, I don't actually know. If you need a motion to retract things.
We made a motion to retract the removal of the parking slots.
So what, I'm, just let me, this is, uh, you obviously aren't interested in, if you're interested in the solution to this-
I'm interested in the website going up. I'm interested in knowing why it did.
Okay, well, those are two different things, and I've answered both.
Because we have either an employee who's not following the motions of the Board, or we have you who's not following the motions of the Board.
And I told you, I'll find out.
That's the question.
It's not, I'll find out.
There's nothing to find out.
Katie!
Answer us now.
Nothing?
I don't remember why it didn't go. That's how, how much, how much more of an answer, I don't understand. I'm sorry, I'm not giving the answer to a demand in public.
It's not, it's not a difficult thing to remember. Katie? You don't remember either?
I'm sorry.
No?
A lot hap- a lot happens around here.
What happens in a month that I can't remember? Why not tell us a fire, or something? Really?
Yeah.
How much time do you spend here a week? It's not forty hours, I know that.
Well, you wouldn't have done that.
Anytime you're wrong, we know the answer.
It's cause I waited for the-
I don't know the actual wiring, and I don't know any of those things.
In the field voicemail.
But I do know that we sat here and had a major discussion.
Yep.
And, and the solution was- And that, and the solution was, and I commend, it cut, we agreed we would vote on the revised come
Yeah.
The last meeting, that you met that schedule.
And we didn't need to anymore, we just did it.
But you told me, or at least I understood, you had developed a temporary website that could do all of these things, and Joe Ariel was here.
Mm-hmm.
And the question was copyright or ownership or something, and you were going to
Oh, no, that's why it didn't happen.
What?
There's no way to transfer the control without doing everything, we had to do it all over. So this was, again, as I said, when I first did this, you know, this was something I was doing, just, cause I thought it'd be, smooth things over a little bit.
Privately.
I'll make that, I won't make the mistake again, nobody goes unpunished. Um, there was a problem with, um, cause, cause if I hadn't even tried to do this, we would have had nothing but the site we have now until revised got it done, whether we approved it in December or whatever.
Right. And then you were gonna turn over.
So, right, that ended up not being possible, turning over to village control without turning over
That's what Ariana is asking you.
Yeah, I, right.
And I'm just saying, I just, I remember, this is what I'm saying, I don't remember everything all at once, I'm saying.
But you would have been told when you found out you couldn't and come up with a better solution?
Well, then we had revised first, well, we didn't have a better solution, cause it was either dumping all that out, those, that time again, or just deal with revise and get a copy.
Well, then I'm going to
Remember the dump it out, you just started a new one in three steps, uploading documents takes no time.
This is
Taking it out.
You could have posted a Dropbox that we talked about, you could have made another WordPress, it takes three seconds.
And if you helped, any of this would have gone.
Jason, you, it's not my job, it's the clerk's job to post things to the website.
You're the full-time mayor. I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Can I just say something publicly before we do that?
Motion on the table, go ahead. Yes.
I would like put on the website, I don't know how, apology, apologies to our community for your consolidation questions not being answered because the village screwed up its website.
That's not what happened.
Well, that's what it sounds to me like happened.
Do you have answer, do you have answers written form to the questions you have?
Yes, she does, she is okay.
We have them right now? No, not the questions themselves, cause we have some in writing.
I don't guess at home.
Okay, can you get, can you get those, Katie, she can put them up on the website.
I don't have any of the questions. I don't, I want, the, what I wanna do is be able to link, which I thought we could do.
Mm-hmm.
The questions that have been asked and answered on the new parts consolidation email.
Mm-hmm.
I want those on the website, so that people
We can do that, just get it to Katie.
Who might have questions.
Get it to Katie, we can have it up. If you have the answers written out, we can give it up.
This, this is all electronic, isn't it? I don't write them out.
Email is fine, I mean, responded to and
Just gotta copy and paste, it's, yeah, just copy and paste it into Word and then post the documents, or however, whatever form, whatever form gets
Well
That's, that's a, that's a separate issue.
But my point is this.
Friendly, friendly amendment that the clerk comes into executive session with us.
I accept.
Thank you.
Are we done what we're supposed to be doing publicly?
Yes.
Um
Anyway, I apologize to the public for not being able to quickly respond to your questions of consolidation because for some reason, we're not connected properly. And when we do, we'll get you the answers, but please do not believe that we're trying to hide or lie or any of those things on the issues that have been, that you have dutifully asked regarding consolidation.
And I apologize that we can't do something as simple as put a website together, um, when that's like one of our base functions.
What was the purpose of the, of the question?
Personnel.
That matters.
Okay.
Of a particular individual is what you need to say.
And is it one ind- is it?
One individual.
Okay. Um, so, uh, on paper.
Aye.
Nay, cause I don't know what this is about.